I believe each and every single one of us got the.
Everybody have.
Everybody got one of these?
All the board members have one of these and folks in the audience would like one without profits as well.
We long. So this evening's work session will be led by Megan Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Trustees, Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works. It is that time of year again, as we're embarking on the budget process to be reviewing rates for 2025, rates and impact fees both for both sets of utilities with the water and wastewater fund. That's what we're looking at this evening. This is a work session this evening for us to to work through the material that I've pulled together. And discuss, I do have some board direction questions towards the end of the meeting that I am looking for some board direction on a couple of items. And there's, as always, a lot in here. So let me get my screen shared. So we can kick off our presentation. Alright, so we are again this evening having a discussion about 2025 proposed water and wastewater usage rates and capital investment fees. As I tend to have a problem with in all my presentations, there might be a back and forth of whether it's called a capital investment fee, a tap fee or an impact fee. I'm really trying to stick to just capital investment fee, but I fall out of that all for this purpose this evening. Those terms are interchangeable for us tonight. I remember having that same conversation last year. So this is essentially kind of outlining what we'll be looking at this evening. We will go through some background where we've been. What were we at currently? I do, I was able to pull together some water rate comparisons. I did not have time to pull together impact fee comparisons in total or sewer rate comparisons, and I can't work on that prior to the next time that I come before you with with rates. I do have also some example bill impacts and then there towards the end, water and wastewater fund impacts. So our financial plan, five-year forecasting impacts. So kicking off with some background for those who may be tuning in or might not have been along for the ride all these years. There's something on my screen I need to get rid of. So we did have at Board Direction, a full utility rate and fee study in 2022. We contracted with Raftellis, they're a Colorado-based firm, nationally recognized for utility rate and fee studies. We contracted with them in April of 2022 and wrapped that up towards the end of 2022 with the final tied up with a bow report coming to us actually in April of 2023. But we did have those, that information ready and available as we presented the new rate structures for 2023. The primary purpose of that study, just as a reminder, was to ensure long-term financial sustainability of both the water and wastewater utilities. And ensuring that costs, that the rates and fees cover costs proportionally across all of our customer classes. The study did include the development of a five-year financial plan cash analysis as well as the models to determine, to be forecasting with that, we actively use those models for both the water and the wastewater fund, and it was really an effort to determine that level of revenue that is needed to meet all of our annual expenditures. There was a cost of service analysis to allocate the cost proportionally to customer classes. We then had a review of alternative rate structure with our utility rate structure roundtable. Again, that was made up of citizens in the community that were able to provide a lot of input around the values that they hold to, and were seeking to have in that rate structure. That is fundamentally how we came up with including a base level of of water usage in our base rate. As sort of that basic usage and basic meeting that basic need of the lowest cost possible. There was then a design of the rates based on the preferred alternatives that were selected. And then a review and update of the water and wastewater tap fees at that time as well. Ensuring that we're capturing that cost to reserve capacity in the system for new development. And that was something that we had kind of missed in the past in previous rate study efforts. We weren't looking at all of these rates and fees holistically at the same time and ensuring that they're all updating regularly. The recommendations from Raftellis that came out of that study were the the new rate structure that was developed and then a recommendation, and that was new rate structures for both the water and wastewater side, and then a recommended 5% increase for five years. And there was a recommended 4% increase for our tap fees or impact or capital investment fees first for five years as well.
You covered all three.
I did, I know. I did want to dive in just a little bit, kind of remind us all what that cost of service analysis was. There is a detailed explanation that I included in your packet this evening, which is really an excerpt straight from that final draft of that, excuse me, that final report that came from Raftellis. They gave a little more in-depth description of the five main steps that go along with that rate, a cost of service analysis. But just at a real high level, this is kind of the industry standard approach to setting utility rates, not just water utility, wastewater, electric utilities use a very similar process. It's based on analyzing the cost of providing service to each customer class. There's a lot of data analysis that went involved with it. And we, you know, aren't really at the luxury, of course, as though we might like to considering some of the pricing of some of our neighbors, but we can't price utilities on market. We have to price utilities to recover the cost that it takes to provide that service to all of our customers. The five main steps, though, in that cost of service analysis are revenue requirement, determining that revenue requirement. So how much money is needed? Cost functionalization, which is a really fancy word to just grouping all the costs together and into into discrete categories. So is it a treatment-related cost? Is it a delivery-related cost? There's metering costs, billing costs. Some of those costs are fixed regardless of how much water you use. Some of them vary based on how much water you use. So that's that cost functionalization process. There's then the development of demand parameters and customer characteristics. So this is understanding the needs of different customer types and how much strain they put on the system. So for an example, in this table you see, and I'll get into describing that a little bit more, and I'm sorry that there's. I don't know if you can move. Not sure if that can be moved. You all have the packet in front of you, but there's a column in these tables called the demand factor. And kind of to to provide just an analogy, let's assume we have a park that receives 100 visitors a day. So that park, but but the town has maybe an annual or couple of annual events that will pull in 500 residents to come to a park in a day. So that demand factor in that situation would be times five, right? So you would have to size that park and the corresponding amenities and services of that location to service 500 people in one day. As a couple of times a year, you would see that. That's very much the same thing that these demand factors are doing in this analogy or in this table. So the daily and hourly peak demand factors for the different customer classes that you see, they're a function of our system-wide maximum day demands and then customer-specific, customer-class-specific max day and max hour demands. So that's how you can kind of, and and I think what's interesting about our community and I think other very targeted, like very, very quintessential bedroom communities would look pretty similar to this. In that you can see in these, in the left-hand side of that column where we're, and this is data pulled straight from the models. It's just a screenshot of the, one of the sheets in the model. That looks at the annual, annual usage in these customer classes. Now, these are times 1,000 gallons. So that's saying that residential is the single-family residential was using almost 270 million gallons and then down the list. So add three zeros to the end of those numbers. Within that average day is just, that's divided by 365. It's a very simple calculation. And where those demand factors come into play is then saying, what is the additional peak day demand, the additional capacity that's needed? So we see that the average day is 736,000 gallons. But how do we need to size our system in order to ensure that we can also meet that maximum day demand? And even beyond that, then that peak hour demand, and that's where those multipliers come into play. And you can see even that across that that column for max day demand, those multipliers aren't that vastly different. Take residential to non-residential, for example, 3.8 times, you know, versus 3.4 times. What really comes into play here is the fact that so much of our system by far and away by orders of magnitude, the single-family residential demand and draw and strain on our system is what drives all of our sizing of our infrastructure, all the sizing where treatment needs. It, it, it is that driving force. And so you can see that, you know, an extra capacity needed is 2 million gallons in order to meet maximum day demand for residential versus 150,000 gallons of extra capacity needed to meet that maximum data man from our commercial community. And so I just wanted to kind of give a little context around the reasoning behind the cost of service analysis and how it can often result in a different differing rate structures across your different customer classes as they do. Their strain and their use on the system is different. That's all those. From there, though, in that, in that process is then you're developing units of service, which is what this is, right? So then you're measuring the amount of water each customer uses. And from that, you distribute the costs across to the customer classes. Kind of one analogy that I was trying to come up with is, is sort of that, you know, you go out to dinner with a friend. You have surf and turf and a glass of wine. They have a cup of soup and water. You're not going to split the bill in half in that instance, right? The costs incurred at that table were not the same for both parties. Maybe if you're extra generous, you've decided to split that bill in half, but I'm not sure across the board if if all would do that. So I just wanted to kind of ground us a little bit in how in the development of the rate, rate structures, what a cost of service analysis is. Provide some of that extra documentation and language for you in the packet. So similar to what you've seen in some past presentations, I did want to review again some of our kind of highest driving expenses for our funds. You have seen similar, very similar slides in the past. Most of these numbers hasn't haven't changed as our, you know, water treatment plant loan repayments and our drinking and our SRF for the water reclamation facility loan payments are generally the same. You have seen some of those pretty significant 640% increase in unit cost for our North Cooter irrigation company contract. Seeing that increase in 2013, $520 an acre foot up to $3,833 last year per acre foot. We are anticipating, I have I've wanted to realistically determine what we, what I think that the North Cooter invoice could look like this year when we created the 2024 budget. I did estimate that just over $3 million budget line item using 9% interest rate variable is that was pretty close to what things were at that time. This estimate that you see here has come a bit, especially given the Fed half point that they reduced just this last week. So I'm looking at an eight and a half percent interest rate variable embedded in the formula to come up with that 2.87 million. All other variables in that, in that calculation have remained the same from what I did with modeling for the, for the budget for this year. So I'm hopeful that that will be the case. And then you can see our, our loan payments again for both the SRF, both SRF loans are also it is for sure the driving factor in the wastewater fund analysis. At that nearly two and a half million. So just a quick snapshot to have everything all in one place. And there's two different structures of these tables as we did change that rate structure entirely with 2023. And I've got, you know, about 15 years worth of data here showing, and this is our residential. For base rates, the tier rates, and then where we, where we were in 2023, where we are right now in 2024 as well. They have the rate structure changed pretty dramatically from 22 to 23, keeping in mind that with that inclusion of, you know, there being essentially zero charge from 0 to 3,000 gallons that's included in that base rate that really did reduce the wintertime bills for the majority of customers in the utility in the community. Residential wastewater basin usage rates, again summarized for the same year span, not the, the biggest change in that rate structure is that we went, we went sort of the opposite direction. Where historically we had included a base usage in the wastewater rate. We know we moved away from doing that and now that base rate just covers those fixed costs and then the variable rate is per thousand gallons. And also similar summary for our water and wastewater capital investment fees. So we kind of have all on one page where we've been and where we are now. So we see a favorite part of the presentation, but at this point, where we are now and the knowledge that we have available to us, staff is recommending sticking with the proposed 5% rate increase for 2025 as was laid out as part of the kind of longer-term plan that came out of the 2022 rate study. Before diving into this, and this is captured at the very end of the presentation, I do want to highlight that we are anticipating, you know, there's a recommended rate study review, like an in-depth rate review every three to five years. Given that we have had so much change and continue to have change with the completion of the, of the projects on both sides, both utilities. We are definitely recommending and it is included in our budget process this year to update that rate study first quarter, kicking off first quarter 2025. So with that would be, you know, really the time to consider modifications, analyze new, new, new potential ideas. Keeping in mind, though, I think the, what we built on with that utility rate structure roundtable, some of the biggest feedback that we got from them was reducing the, the whiplash effect to our residents and trying to remain as consistent and predictable as we can. And that is, is part of the reason for continuing to propose that we follow along the path that we started in 2022, starting with that new rate structure in 2023. So keeping that in mind. This is what that 5% rate increase would look like for our single-family, multifamily residential rates. And I'm not going to linger on these tables very long. We have all, all in front of you. Again, also, it's just a straight 5% on the commercial and irrigation water rates. Again, 5% on the wastewater. And I do want to say that we are proposing as we did, as, as the board directed an inquiry in 2024 that we consider 5% instead of 4% for the impact fees. We are proposing the same 5% this year as well, and I do believe it's justifiable as we've yet to see any kind of downturn or cost savings across, you know, construction costs and it's all costs are still continuing to go, though fortunately not at quite the same rate as, or pace as they have been. But so this does include a 5% increase for capital investment fees for both water and wastewater. So again, kind of hitting on that consideration of that, you know, unfortunately, we're not in a position to be able to place to, to develop our rates for our customers based on market conditions, what are other people charging? It is good to understand where we fall in the region. So I did pull together and I was only able to do this for, for drinking water for single-family residential. And I will see that I can, if I can't build something together, I do have some commercial in here too, but if I can do some same comparisons for wastewater rates as well as as impact fees in the region. You'll notice there on the lists of communities that I have, have worked to try and get some information for some of the big ones are not on that list as they're probably the least comparable communities that we could be, be even looking to see, to see what they're charging. Fort Collins, Alvin Water District is still one of the cheapest water providers in the state. City Fort Collins, City of Greeley, City of Loveland, they are at a different scale than, than the town of Wellington. So I did go through and look at some of our other regional neighbors, though. I, I, and did find that as we've all sort of been made aware through the last couple of years, there's been a lot of rate analysis going on in a lot of these communities, including Johnstown, who's at the bottom of that list, but I believe they have a 6% plan for the next six years. Each year, for the next six years. Interestingly enough, too, and I didn't know this at the time, but you'll see Nun and Eaton both, both up there pretty high on this kind of base level 3,000 gallon usage. They both have adopted virtually the same, similar rate structure. So that they have a, like Nun has a $60 base charge and that base charge includes up to 4,000 gallons of water use. And then their tier structure comes into play after that. It goes the same way. It's, what was it, $58 for a base charge and includes 4,000 gallons and then their tier structure moves up from there. Not surprisingly, after the year we've had, this is where these updated tables come into play. So this is correct. The paper that you have in front of you is correct, but the packet, if you printed it out before coming, this slide is not correct. We are at the top of the list. So when we're looking at higher level usage, summertime irrigation usage. It's expensive. Our costs are expensive. And then as far as non-residential, which is just a fancy word for commercial. We're also at the top of the list, both in, in a smaller usage scenario, 15,000 gallons or in 70,000 gallons, 71,000. I just pulled examples. On usage, the majority of communities that I looked at actually have a fixed a, a single-tier pricing for, for their commercial. So they have generally the same or even a smaller typically base charge, like, like, for example, even on smaller base charge, similar to us, because it doesn't include extra volume or, you know, that base level volume in it. And then they have just one, one, one rate or one tier for all their commercial customers are only charged it, you know, whatever that one tier is. They don't have tier rate structures. So there's a lot of variation in how folks and around us are pricing to recover the cost of their service. So just, I don't need to dwell on this too much. This is the exact same template and format that you did see last year. I just wanted to provide kind of a snippet. A couple of things I do want to highlight, though, is that historically, and Nick, Mr. David touched on this earlier. Historically, we had seen 4,000 gallons as being sort of the average winter use, and that was what is what our, our rate model was embedded with to, for projecting wastewater rates even, assuming that there was 4,000 gallons that would be utilized. We have seen a reduction in that usage in the winter. 3,000 gallons is now our average. And so I did update that in these tables to reflect, or in these kind of example bill impacts to reflect that. I have also updated, when we get to the financial plans, projected plans, the, the models that we utilize have been updated to reflect that as well. So you'll see a slightly different expected revenue, final year revenue in that model for 2024 than you would have seen in the budget as the, that model's been honed in even that much further. So this is just trying to give you a snapshot of some, you know, kind of typical, you know, 15,000 gallons in the summer. What that bill would look like, what is the total increase there along the bottom of the, of the slide for each of those scenarios for a, a single-family residential? I have a three-quarter tap commercial and, and that impact and then also a one and a half inch tap industrial user. And you can see with the, the restructuring of our wastewater rates, which does say sewer on here, but our wastewater rates with that new structure that was put in place in 2023 where commercial customers are pay a wastewater rate, usage rate based on their water usage rate that month, not based on a winter quarter average as their water consumption and therefore wastewater production is not nearly so limited in the winter as it is like, if they're increasing production, they're increasing their wastewater, you know, that sort of thing. It's not just irrigation that's happening, being used outside building. So that is bringing in some additional revenue on the wastewater side. And then an, an example of what that, this 5% could look like for an HOA, a typical one and a half inch irrigation to customer. And of course, doesn't have any wastewater fees. So just then all on one page, so you kind of have it all at the same time. What those balance uses were three under each of these scenarios and then the total increase from, from existing rates to the proposed 2025 rates. Now digging into the fund impact. So I want to start out by talking about that these are financial projections. These models produce projections based on our assumed expenditures over the next several years. That includes capital improvement projects. It includes operations expenditures, staffing, all of that. And then, of course, our estimated revenues. That's going to be impact fees that in water usage, so rates that's it's represented, the, the general fund transfers are represented in there, the what am I trying, interest, interest income, which has been, you know, the one upside to high interest rate is we received a lot more interest in the last couple of years as projected. So just as a summary of what is included and embedded for the financial projections that we'll go through, it does include the as-proposed $6 million intra-fund loan from the, and that is, you know, as Mr. Rhodes had, had referenced, that sort of the made-up term for the town of Wellington in terms of it's within the same funds, was not required to have this formal loan structure. But we are going to track that and because it's so important to ensure that that money does come back to the raw water fund for a variety of reasons that you're aware of. And it, so we have embedded a 10-year repayment schedule in, in that modeling effort. It is assuming general fund transfers will take place as, as approved already for 2024. But the models also assume a general fund transfer for 2025. That's a point for discussion here when we get to it. We are seeing, and, and it took some finagling and some reallocating of, of, or I guess some, some really fine-tooth combing of our capital improvement plan for 2025 to ensure that we do come in for both the water, drinking water and the wastewater funds meeting, not just, you know, retaining a fund balance, but meeting our town reserve policy in both years for 2025. There, it does show in the water fund, combined fund deficit spending that happens this year and continues forward. And then there was combined fund deficit spending in the wastewater fund projected 24 through 27. And in that instance, that combined fund balance, though, does remain positive. Though we're not meeting our reserve policy as it currently stands. And one of the reasons I wanted to kind of touch on some of these points is if you remember when I was here in October of last year, so we're about a month ahead of schedule from where we were last year. We were looking at some pretty upside-down situation in the wastewater fund, right? So that's one of the things that we have to remember when we're looking at these financial projections that they are just that. There's a lot of room for us to make up shortfalls with planning, with considering projects that can be moved with working hard to reduce expenses wherever we can. And we were able to do that in the wastewater fund, as you'll see now, we're now have a positive fund balance for every year that's in the, in the model projection. So I just want to keep that in mind. And again, we're also looking at when we go through the budgeting process. You know, our rate setting process is similar to our budget process and that it's approved on an annual basis and we're only looking to approve that rate for next year. Just like we're only approving the budget for 2025. That we do need to have longer-term planning in order to make sure that we've got expectations of what's coming our way, what we know we need to be planning for. And there are some new things that are, you'll see in the CIP budget and the water fund that we're going to be planning for, and we'll talk through that. I guess next week, actually. So two weeks. It's all, it's all the same day, very long time. It's all the same day. One very long day. And so with that, we do have, and I, I included these both there in a slide form, which is probably really hard to read. And then also it's the same thing in the there were two PDFs that were included. It's a separate water fund and wastewater fund, combined water and press fund projection. And the, those are all the same numbers, but I'll leave it on the screen. But what you can see is it does show, and this is assuming a 5% rate increase and a 5% rate increase. One large assumption is that it is, because Cody's crystal ball is foggy. But we're doing our best to, to make reasonable expectations of assumptions on how many building permits we're going to see in 2025, how many permits we'll see for the remaining portion of 2024. Those estimates are in here as well. And you can see in you can see in 2020, I'm wondering, ooh, go up. Right here, I almost wish I had a pointer, can I turn this into a pointer? Bond loan proceeds, we're expecting our, you know, we will not have any more proceeds moving forward, but we've taken the last of our SRF loan early this year. Here is where you, that, that intra-fund loan shows up. Here's also the general fund transfers, as Mr. David also spoke to. He reported on, and on his slides were listed the numbers that had been, were our estimated projections. Those numbers were our assumed general fund transfers for 2024 were based on our assumed revenue projections, because we don't make those transfers till the end of the year, as we are required to, we can't exceed that 10% of operating revenue. So these, this $600,000 general fund transfer is updated, right? So it's, it looks less than what you saw in Mr. David's presentation as based on the rate modeling, I believe we're going to come in a little bit lower than we thought. I think it was 639 or 649? Something like, yeah. And I'm thinking it's going to be more like 600. So that's what I've represented here, and I'm not saying it wasn't just off the cuff that I thought that the some in-depth analysis led to that. And then I do have embedded one more general fund transfer for discussion for 2025. And then you can see down at the bottom, capital line 18 here, capital, total capital. So that's our capital. Um, and then you can see down at the bottom, um, capital line eighteen here, capital, total capital, so that's our capital, um. Expenditures and you can see it dropping off fast, uh, next year as we get away from these giant, you know, tens of millions of dollars a, a year. With the treatment facility expansion, um, but we do have a couple of years of some decently large numbers out here as well. Um, twenty six and twenty seven. And that does lead us to, you know, squeaking in here down at the very bottom under twenty twenty five. Making our, our, so it's not the fund balance, that's our, that's the amount, um, exceeding our, our reserve target. So fund balance would remain at the end of the year, almost two million, um, with, with just a little extra over our required reserve balance. And then in the wastewater fund, we're looking at something pretty similar, um, we do have. I did update what I, what I believe is going to be closer to the amount for this general fund transfer for twenty twenty four of three hundred thousand. Um, which is I think about thirty or so lower than the, um, what was originally in the budget. And, um, you will also see total capital dropping off really fast in the wastewater fund as we get. Uh, wrap up the bulk of the project this year with one remaining piece that, that, um, horrible reactor, um. Up, upgrade happening next year and that's that kind of larger number, the two point three million, that's the bulk of that for next year. And of course, in this one, we've got a very large debt service payment, um, going on for a number of years. So we do manage also to meet our reserve policy, um, by a few thousand dollars for twenty twenty five. And not quite quite well added to the future and that would be, um. Part of something that gets talked about and reviewed and analyzed more in depth with the rates to the, uh, proposed rates to the update in early twenty twenty five. So we do have, um, kind of potential opportunities or next steps here, um. So far to date, um, expecting that, that mo- those modified numbers that I have in this, in this presentation for twenty twenty four. We're looking at, what is that, almost three million dollars? That the general fund has transferred to the water and wastewater funds in total since twenty tw- beginning in twenty twenty two, through twenty twenty four. Currently, this modeling that you have before you does show, um, some expected general fund transfers for one more year in twenty twenty five. Um, of course, probably the largest opportunity on the table, I hope it's on the table, it's on the table. Um, is the ongoing contract negotiations with North Pooter, um, you can expect an update and, uh, uh, upcoming executive session. On that topic, there can always and, and do continue to be, um, you know, some operational and capital cost savings throughout. Staff is always working diligently and ensuring that we can find every place that we can responsibly cut costs, um, and still ensure the longevity of our systems. And then we do propose kicking off, um, that utility rate and fee study update as early as we can in twenty twenty five. Um, keeping on that recommended schedule of updates, kind of coming in at the early end of that, every three to five year recommended, um, update schedule. So that we can ensure with the, that we have the full embedded costs of, uh, of our new treatment facilities and that cost functionalization process. That's going to change, um, with, with those new treatment plants, um. I think we've seen some usage patterns change as well, um, enough that it would be interesting to, you know, it warrants, um, a further dive. Um, I think just all, all told and then potentially if we have. Movement, positive movement with the North Peter contract, that's really going to turn things around and we will need to see what, what that does. And we can always, even in consideration, I do re- remind. The board that we can absolutely come, we would come back to you at any point that we, we believe that there is enough of an impact to any fund. Positive or negative, um, to ensure that you're up to date with all that information, which would mean as soon as we have anything that we can bring. To an open session, um, to talk about that could impact, hopefully in a positive way, that water fund especially, if we come to you right away. Um, we don't need to wait until next fall to review the potential of, of rate changes or anything associated with that. But staff is of the opinion at the current moment that without having wet ink on a real piece of paper. Um, it is. Not super responsible to, to plan for hoped. For hopes and dreams, you need to plan for facts and numbers. So with that, we are looking for a little bit of board direction and I want to have discussion, I'm here to answer all the questions. Um, but the two main things I, I want to touch on this evening and ask what additional information you would need. Um, is to determine if, if you do recommend moving forward with a proposed five percent rate. Um, wastewater and wastewater rate and capital investment fee increase and then also the consideration of. A general fund transfer again for twenty twenty five to both the water and the wastewater fund. And I, I might be speaking out of turn ever so slightly on, I'm not sure if we've had in-depth. Discussion on those amounts and their, their impact to the general fund with the budget process. Kind of, it will, but it'd be embedded, so I mean, if we choose to move this forward, then now is the time to understand what that would do. In the general fund and what maybe cuts would be required from the general fund in order to make that happen.
Just can.
Uh, Megan, thank you for putting this together. Um. You know, it's, it's difficult with. Condition that we've got right now and what led to all increases, you know, I looked at that. One of the relies in that ten year period in costs going over six hundred forty percent.
Yeah.
Most of those. Big increases came after twenty twenty, you know, when interest rates started going up. And it's, and I'm encouraged that we are in negotiations. And hopefully we can get some of those costs down, but some of the things and the concerns that I've got is, um. You know, one of, besides just be able to get these plants on board. And increasing our capacity and hopefully getting water, uh, a cheaper rate for purchasing the water from, from Royal Pooter. Um, you know, we've got other priorities in the town as well, if, if we're trying to attract commercial business, if we're trying to. Uh, get, and the commercial business brings opportunities for, for residents, it brings. Jobs, it brings revenues for the town to help pay for services and so forth like that. Um, but. You know, as we, as we go forward, we need to be conscious as well about, you know, what those commercial rates would look like. Would they? Could they? Service of barrier to commercial growth in the town? Uh, you mentioned that one of the, one of the communities just has a flat rate for commercial. And instead of a tiered rate and so forth like that, I think that what we've got to do. When we, you know, going forward in twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six, especially. When we start making an effort to bring more, more commercial business here, we need to keep in mind whether or not those commercial rates are going to be. Can be used as an incentive. Uh, to bring businesses, it's hard enough to get, to get business. Uh, to move into any place because the cost of land, cost of construction, uh, and so forth, so. Uh, anything the town can do to kind of tailor. That package to make it more attractive, so I, I would be. I would like to have a discussion at some point, uh, after the first of the year about. Like what those commercial rates would be and, and how that fits into an economic development, uh, strategy for the town. Um, operational cost savings as well, I'm glad you put that on there that you're looking for that. You know, I've been in this business long enough to, to know that. We're kind of upside down right now and we get. We've got plans, but it's, it's going to be painful, it's going to be painful, it's going to be painful for our fund balances. Um, and our opportunities that, that those balances give us. Um, so the opportun- operational cost savings, I've, I've worked with another number of communities that have. Uh, explored things like, uh, put it in solar panels by the wastewater plant to help reduce some of the electrical loss costs. That's a big cost for, uh, uh, for, for treating, treating that. And, you know, even my last community that I worked with in Frazier received grants. Put in a solar array which reduced the electrical cost by about forty percent. So, I mean, I think we need to be able to, to explore that and then in some ways it sounds. You know, counterintuitive to, to spend money to save money, uh, but when you think about the return on investment. For, for anything that substantially can reduce those long range costs. Um, and get that more manageable for our residents and our commercial businesses. Uh, I think we need to be actively exploring all, all avenues and. Uh, you know, the five percent increase. As a former staff member, you know, you, you, you say, that's where we're at, we've got to do it. We've got, we, we, we paid for the study and said, you said, this is the best way for us to make sure we cover our costs. But with current climate in, in Wellington, it's, it's hard to make that decision and sometimes though. We as a board. Have to be thinking not about the immediate relief, but sometimes we have to be thinking about the long-term viability of our town. To make sure we're making, uh, proper decisions, I think there've been bad decisions made, I think the contract, we talked about the eighty three contract before. Was beneficial for the town, but we gave up our ownership of water to get that. And twenty years or forty years later, you know, we're paying the price for that. Was it a bad decision then? No, probably not, but. Again, I want to make sure that we're always making good decisions with our water, with our resources. Uh, that we're protecting that resource, that we're using all the tools like the, uh, the water efficiency study that the town commissioned back in twenty eighteen. Uh, so that we can bring in more conservation measures to keep costs down to the residents, now that has a, that has a. A counterintuitive effect because you're not bringing in the revenues to help pay for, you know, the, the debt service and so forth like that. And I say, it's a, it's a hard thing to balance, but. Um, I do appreciate, uh, the Raffell's study, I. I believe that the five percent proposed increase over the next five years that he proposed. Uh, helps us to recover our costs and make sure that we're, we're, we're financially viable in our, in our water and wastewater funds. Um, uh, the capital, yeah, investment, uh, do we have a, uh, any kind of study other than just a. Other than, well, instead of four percent, let's make it five percent, the, the only reason I bring that up is, is if. If, if a four percent was, was an engineered study that says, okay, this is, this is what it will take. And this is, this is. We know this, it's factual, it's data, data driven and so forth, four percent increase. If you stray from that. There's a possibility that, that, you know, I developed a kind of, I said, why am I being charged an extra one percent on? On, on an impact fee, and I know the cost to just go on to the people who are buying the house, but by the same token, there's concerns that, that we're. They were operating and were in fully, maybe the fact that my last community is in the lawsuit. It, it makes me cautious about, about increasing from four to five percent, uh, for the, for the capital improvement funds. Uh, I think that if you do a Raffell's, uh, update. And I think according to communications I've heard about where, how the negotiations with North Pooter are going. Um. You know, all of that information could change a bit, um, we're under a New York Buddha contract. And maybe the question would be under, when you update the Raffell's study, if you're looking at the capital improvements and plans. Uh, you ask the question about, okay, are we justified in a five percent increase or six percent increase? And then there's still another element when it comes with our wastewater, uh. Uh, analysis about alternative water sources, that capital improvement fee, tap fees, whatever you want to call it. Uh, will change. Significantly based on the cost of projected new water, so. So, uh, I'm not sure going five percent for the, for the capital improvement fees is, I know it's just a little bit more, but. That's the only thing I'm kind of a little nervous about, but five percent, I could be supportive of that. I think we just always need to be in the community talking to our, our residents about why. Why are we doing this? Because you can, you know, if you only get a snapshot, you know, like. Our rates are through the roof and now you're raising the rates again, I mean, that's the message that's, that's going to be out there, so we need to be thinking as well. About how do we communicate why a rate study, uh, why a rate increase would be warranted? And hopefully maybe the, maybe the North Pooter negotiations would, would occur before any new rates going to be next year.
So, so the headline is, you're okay with five percent?
I'm okay with the five.
And the general fund transfer?
Uh, I, I don't have enough information here about what our current fund balance is on our, on our, on our general fund, but if there's sufficient funds in there to keep us. To keep our general fund, uh, with, and we, and we've got a reserve policy met on the general fund. Um, yeah, I would be okay with the transfer, is it a transfer, is it a grant, is it a loan, does it get paid back?
It's a grant.
So it's a grant, sometimes it doesn't come back to us here. Okay, so. There's no way to recover the money from the general fund that goes into the water fund, but I think it's needed. It's, it's been, it's, it's needed last year, it's probably going to be needed next year and I'm not even sure about twenty twenty six yet.
Um, so it's not in that projected for twenty twenty six? Not right in.
Yeah, hopefully we can get things a little under control by twenty twenty six, but that's, that's my thoughts on this.
But clarification, the intra-fund loan does get paid back over that. You see that on that, that, uh. Analysis under debt service, uh, line fifteen for the water fund. Let's see it showing up with the, with the payment starting next year in twenty twenty five. Perfect.
Yes, so I think one of the most important things to note and realize is. We lease two thousand acre feet from NPIC, that doesn't include what we have in our little holdings with our wells around town. It costs the same amount of money to treat water for an apartment complex. As it does a commercial business, as it does a residential home, we don't say when we process our water at our water plant. We don't specifically say, oh, this is only for condos, this is only for residential. So at the end of the day, when it comes down to it, we all pay the, the same amount to process the water. What happens is, is the, the basis comes off of it is more expensive to, um. Provide the infrastructure to residential, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, it's more expensive to provide. The infrastructure to run the larger piping to get to residential compared to commercial. Got it, um, so one of my questions.
Just quick, quick, just for clarification there, the, the infrastructure that. And maybe I'm, I'm, I'm miss, I'm missing you there, but, but your capital investment fees are what's paying for your infrastructure. Uh, you know, that's, that's what the developer is bringing to the table. To pay for the added infrastructure needed to support that development, so, you know. It's, it's not necessarily reflected on your, on your water, unless I'm wrong.
Well, there's, there's capital, we have capital projects all the time that are not growth related projects, right? So there's still a lot of capital fees related to that and then every pipe that goes in the ground, we're going to pay the cost to maintain perpetually.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so that, and the cost to maintain larger infrastructure is more than the cost to maintain smaller infrastructure.
Yeah, I get all that.
So I think that's what she's, that's what she was.
That's what I was understanding, what you explained earlier.
Thank you.
So, and if that were the case, then my, my understanding of how the. Taps and items like that for the capital, capital investment fees, how they are set up, does not make as much sense to me. Um, so you don't have to run to run piping to a larger commercial building. It does not cost more than what it does to run it to residential. If you say you're upgrading the piping for the capital investments.
Or, are we, could you compare, I guess, do I need to look at a table?
Give me one second, let me see if I can.
I mean, so the pipe itself would be more expensive.
Got it.
Right off the bat, and I think what we're talking about with these rates is. Right off the bat. And I think what we're talking about with these rates is strain on the system as well, is what's going to be a major differentiated factor.
And I just wasn't sure if you're, are you talking about, are we talking about rates or are you talking about capital investment fees?
I'm talking about capital investment fees right now.
Alright, so I'm looking at this table, slide fourteen. I don't know what is in the packet. I don't know what page number is in the packet.
I know, I can't.
One thirty four.
So when you're going down the lines here, this is what kind of my concern is based off of. Is the until we know exactly kind of statistically what people are paying around the area. I know it was mentioned that we have to have provable on the four to five percent. But when we get information back to us, and that's something that I guess I'm asking for to be provided, is the averages like what we did for residential related to our area compared to other areas, because can you use that data to support the reason why you would increase that from four to four percent to five percent?
Uh so that uh the increases for impact fees are in part related to inflationary cost increases as well. Okay, so that was that was the giant justifiable reason why it was absolutely okay to be increasing it to five percent last year over the proposed you know, originally proposed four percent. I I believe that is still the case and that that could be justified, especially if we, you know, it's going to slow down in a hurry. It already has slowed down some. But I I don't, I I personally, from the research I've done and the communications I've had with Raftellus, don't have a great deal of heartburn about there being a great deal of risk associated with a five percent increase over four percent. And that would also be reevaluated here to ensure that it's, you know, really in line and 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 that the the impact that we have altogether are in line with some of the updated costs that we're going to have associated with the new facilities. Um and, you know, better, more robust and and current capital plans. I mean, every year that gets better.
So that is one of my things when it's related to residential, is it does not cost more or cost less to deliver that water when you're looking at the cost of actual water to the commercial, commercial businesses, to the residential businesses, to multifamily or irrigation. It still all costs the same to process it.
Can 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 we expand on that a little bit?
I was going to try, but I keep getting interrupted at pretty much the same point in my explanation. So I I'm headed and then I get derailed in my thought because I get, yes. So the generalized idea is it's not based off of the two thousand acre feet that's being delivered. It's based off of the generalized idea that there's multiple facets that go into that rate, this rate structure that we are looking at. It's not just our water costs this much to process, and this is why this is why it's not even or it is even compared to the different providers, well, not providers, but users on the system. Um I know that's been a question that keeps coming up and I've tried to go around in different circles and looking at trying to explain it differently. And I keep coming back to, it does not cost more to treat the water that comes out of the plant. It costs more when you look at delivering and upgrading and upkeeping the system. And that's where those additional costs are coming from when we look at the different rate structures compared to residential, commercial, irrigation. That's what I'm trying to understand, but also explain in my generalized.
I'm going to ask to share the screen again. Which I think I just have to do, and then I can take control. Um so where that increased cost comes from? I know, which is at the very beginning. It does cost more to treat and deliver two hundred and seventy million gallons of water than it does to treat or deliver ten thousand ga- million, excuse me, ten million or seven million or twenty three million. Got it. That that's fundamentally where, so it 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 does cost more to treat and deliver the volume difference that there is in our community for residential versus customer versus versus the other customers. And if and 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 this kind of rate structure and type of it is, you know, using a process service method, that's a policy decision that can be reviewed during during the next update. If the board chooses to do that, um that we can, you know, staff would take direction. And and we can investigate all kinds of different types of rate structures. Um it it will result in another swing of people not knowing what the rates are going to look like and and um you know, within the reasonableness of of the limitations of PSL to even implement certain kinds of structures um or or building software. Um but it's it's fundamentally the fact that our entire system is is driven by the the need to to meet the man from roughly four thousand residential customers compared to about a hundred and thirty commercial customers and like thirty forty irrigation customers and and also very few multifamily.
Got it.
And then some of the other things to keep in mind too, and in in one of those considerations, you know, something has come up and I I've seen some or heard some whisperings about chat or whatever, is the difference between residential and multifamily. So one thing to keep in mind is that when you have a multifamily tap, you have no less than two units behind that tap. You could have as many in our case as I think like seventeen units behind a single tap. So the the fixed costs associated with reading the meter, producing a bill maintaining that meter, it's one meter with a whole bunch of units behind it. So it's not the same cost per unit. Those fixed costs are not going to be the same per unit as they are for a single family home, where it's one meter, one home, one meter, one home, one business, one, you know, one meter, one business. Um when you have multiple units behind a meter, those costs are then separated out amongst those those units. So that's where, uh you know, a lower base rate is comes into play. And, you know, the analysis that was done in in the usage patterns too, show that they're, they don't have the same kind of max day demand, max hour demand on the system. Not to mention, they're just a small pocket too of the overall demand on our system. I'm sorry.
Could and 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 maybe just to help you as a visualization for residents, for example, right? When when we, ob- obviously, the meter, the meter thing is very valid, right? If I've got, you know, seventeen units behind a single meter, that's that's very valid. Well, I would also suggest that, right, when you have seventeen homes next to each other, right? Especially dependent on lot size or these types of things, the pipe between all of these different units is significantly longer, right? Then you have a single pipe feeding a seventeen person unit, right? So there's, there there's many different pieces to that particular equation, right? So it's not simply just a meter or uh how many units are behind it, but it's also the infrastructure to get to the meter and multiple other things, just to help visualize that if you will.
Exactly. It's actually would be a good visual to produce.
Yeah, we did hear, speaking of visuals, and we did talk a little bit about processing cost, you know? Having having a processing cost per thousand gallons, you know, might help the analysis of, yeah, it costs them the same amount of money to process a gallon of waters it does for commercial or residential. The thing is that if you're residential using four, five, six times as much as the commercial, then yes, they're cost to be high because you have to pay for that water, the processing costs, the operations to do with that, so.
Well, and and I mean, you look at peak demand, you're increasing the electricity pulled by the plant, all of that to run all of that process it at the rate at which it needs to be processed. So it is more expensive to provide residential, especially during peak demand.
So the additional question that I have is page one forty eight. You go down to, and I'm looking at the line item twenty two on ending balance in twenty twenty six. But I'm also looking at line item twenty six under proposed revenue reserve target. So when we look at twenty twenty six, we even with the I don't see that intra-fund loan added to that one. Is there a specific amount of time that that intra-fund loaned? Cause we were doing that for how many years? So but um and that's to the water utility, correct? But I don't see it added in on twenty twenty six, it's zeroed. So the ending balance, even with everything, we go into the negative in our water fund in twenty twenty six?
Uh the intra-funds there in twenty twenty six.
Oh, I'm looking at line nine, intra-fund loan.
Oh, no, so that's the revenues. Those are sources of funds and then uses of funds down below us. So that's the the one time six million dollars coming in and then you see six hundred thousand going out.
Got it, but so to get, so I guess explain this to me, because the intra-fund online item nine is zero.
That's a a re- um so it it's showing as a revenue in twenty twenty four. The one time revenue sink from the wastewater.
Oh, you guys are dropping the entire, you, we dropped the entire six million.
We haven't done anything yet, because it's not in the beer.
Got it, okay. So it's not breaking it up into the small pieces, it's literally just dropping the six million. That that corrects some of my misunderstanding on that. So then with the loans, with that loan, in twenty twenty six, we're still six hundred and twenty eight thousand eight hundred and ten dollars negative.
We are.
And then we're under our proposed reserve target by two point seven million dollars.
We are.
Almost two point eight million dollars.
We are.
So that's a massive concern, because that's after we've loaned ourselves six million dollars.
You are correct.
That we're still almost two point eight million dollars in the hole.
Well, six hundred thousand in the hole.
Right, but we'll be under that pres- that reserve target. So and are the policy is driven by the SRF loan, is it not? Do we not have loan stipulations that state that that has to be?
There's debt service coverage, um that's required for the SRF loan, but our our reserve policy is above and beyond that.
So and the only way when we look at that at the end of the day, the only way, and this is with the proposed five percent a year increase.
Yep.
So we could very well possibly be looking at twenty twenty six if we don't find a secondary water source or negotiate the NPIC contract. We have to recover another two point eight million dollars from our residents.
So one year. And then each year.
Yeah, it goes more and more.
Yeah.
Negative.
I forgot to start off the conversation when talking about how much this is my favorite time of year.
Yeah.
I I'm sorry, I just, I I want to know exactly what we're looking at, because if we are, but and that is one of the reasons why I I kind of kicked it off in the beginning before we launched in the financial plan to review. To remember that our budget is approved on an annual basis only, we're only approving a budget for twenty twenty five. Our rates are only approved on an annual basis, we're only approving rates for twenty twenty five, talking about approving rates rather for twenty twenty five. And just as, you know, this time a year ago, we were, we were, if I'm not mistaken, one and a half million dollars. Upside down on wastewater fund? Yes, we were assuming that that we would end next year, one point five million dollars in the negative. But we are actually ending next year two two point four million dollars in the positive. So and I I think the point of that was was um to ensure that we remember that staff is working all the time.
Oh, no, yeah, this doesn't have.
Oh, no, I I know it has nothing to do with that, but 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 it is, um, there are ways to recover. There are many considerations out there and we are, uh we do have an important one that is actively bringing their firm. And there are capital costs in there that I have yet to agree to kick out and we can do that. I mean, if it comes down, if there's no money, then they'll live in a single wide trailer with their bathroom. Cause there's no option. Right now, I haven't eliminated, we have not, we have not eliminated that as an option yet, because we're not producing the the budget, we're not approving. Or recommending is not being approved, you know, we're not approving a budget for twenty twenty six, it's for twenty twenty five.
I know, but I'm uh in the
I know, I know.
Looking kind of person and it's hard to not look at the future and say, well, this looks okay in the moment. It is one of those things that, I mean, that's a lot of recovery. So that's, I think, one of those things that we we look at and look towards when we move forward with making sure that we're doing the hug grant funds and stuff like that, that increased allocations annually to project additional costs in future years might be extremely beneficial.
So the headline is, are you in favor of the five percent and the transfer from the general fund?
Well, I'm in favor of the transfer from the general fund. Right now, until we look at like a lot of the other costs for commercial and stuff like that. I'm I'm, right now, I don't know, as far as the five percent goes.
So what would you need, what what costs for commercial?
Well, just like the the whole package when we look at it, because we we don't really sweep.
What additional information would you need in order to have what you have to?
Come back to me, I'll get it to you in one second.
Um I appreciate all the information very much. And as much as it doesn't seem like good news, this is significantly better than what we faced in the past um from projections, so. That might seem crazy, but that is actually the situation in which we're in, so. With that said, I want to highlight the things that we are doing right now within our control and above and beyond requirements to help the situation. Cause a lot of it was highlighted and it's very small print, unless you really know what you're looking for, if somebody's watching, they may not get it. So first thing, a six million dollar intra-fund loan. That's something that we have done to reduce the burden on rate pairs, a six million dollar intra-fund loan. Um each year for three years, we've committed the maximum amount of a transfer from general funds to these, to these funds to supplement them. The maximum legal amount that we can do to add extra money into these funds that they're not producing on their own. So within the law, we are giving as much money towards this as possible. Um the other things that people hate hearing, but I have to say it, is the other things that we're doing to help is we're trying to help people to use less water by enforcing things like water restrictions. We're trying to help people to understand to use less water, how to use water more effectively. Um in that, people don't like to be told what to do. Um but in advance of this, there's lots of reasons why we enforce water restrictions. But one of them is to help people to use less money to pay for less water. We've done tons of hug grants and other ways again to supplement it, that's not using the water fund money to help residents with paying their bills. Um and what we've determined that and calculated that is your essential use within your house, you can get credited for three months of the entire year. That's how that's calculated. Um in addition to that, a lot of it can't be said in public meetings or in or in general, but we are aggressively seeking as many ways as possible to improve our overall water situation, the cost of water and so on. And we are aggressively seeking as many methods as possible. I'm not just saying one contract. I'm saying across the board, so many diverse options of trying to reduce the cost of water and reduce the burden to rate pairs. So I wanted to highlight those real quick, because a lot of those are in the fine print of what you're looking at, other ones we might not have the context. So with that said, we're bleeding millions of dollars a year still. And um that is the situation in which we're in, which is a very scary. Uh it's less scary than Uh, it's less scary than last year, fantastic, it is still incredibly scary and serious. So, based on those things, these are my suggestions and needs and wants. I would love to, because this has come up before, and I think it's, it would be helpful in this situation is to explain the cost of service differences between multifamily and single, that's already come up, so I'm not gonna go into that further, I just think that understanding of that is missing, um, and it might be helpful. Um, I am incredibly appalled and looking at it from this perspective on our non-residential costs compared to other surrounding communities, it's not like we're the highest. It's like. It's like, we're the highest by over double, and we're talking about thousands and thousands, well, thousands of dollars for, you know, high water seventy one thousand gallon usage. Um, bills in the thousands, so. I say that because it looks really scary in this, this, but we also have gone through a complete study to determine that that is actually the cost to deliver that, to deliver that work, that water, that is the cost of service, and that's why it is that much. It's probably because it is so improportional, that, that it, it, it looks like this when compared to other communities. I don't think the other communities are covering the cost, and I think that the residential users are probably making up more more than we have chosen not to do, just by principle of making sure that everybody covers their own cost of service between the classes. Um, so when we do, and I, I have to insist that we do another update to our water um, study, rate study, I think we need to, um, really, we'll get that cost of service by class. And make sure that we have the right balance there, or if there's a different method of billing that would make us look so less un-unfriendly to businesses, this, if you look at this graph, it says we want you to go out of business. If you use water.
With that, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna talk, so, but we have the highest everywhere. It just, it looks like we're trying to take you down, if you look at this, and we wanna be friendly to businesses, we don't want to have that perspective, so. This is scary to look at, I don't want people to feel like that about Wellington. So I wanna see what we can do, so the, the water study, absolutely, you didn't ask for feedback on that one, but I'm gonna say yes, I, I definitely want us to see that in the budget. Um, the other pieces of feedback I have is that we have so many plans for relief, but none of them are solid. Um, and it is irresponsible for us to make plans on something that's not set, so in this case, we need to continue on the given path that we have and the information that we have. Knowing that even with that path, we're still losing millions of dollars. But we have to consider in the budget five percent increase to, um, all of our rates and to impact fees. And in addition to that, we have to continue giving the maximum legal supplement from the general fund to the, to the, the water funds. Um, because there's no reason we should be taking extra money from people when we have the opportunity to supplement that elsewhere, so that's, I, I, by principle, I believe in that. Um, but the thing is, I wanna see that in the budget, obviously, I mean, that's the next step of what your recommendation is, I'd like to see that in the budget. Um, that's recommended, uh, not necessarily approving, right? Cause I wanna see how the numbers look with that in the budget, as the worst case scenario, planning for the worst, hoping for the best. Um, and that's, that's my feedback on what I was.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did you find what you?
Yeah, I just wanted to verify, you said it was already in the budget, right?
Yeah, but what you were looking for earlier?
No, uh, I'm good, go ahead.
Okay. Trusty Moore.
Um, yes, in a second, um. So. I was a part of that Raftellus roundtable, and it was seriously probably the most diverse group I've participated in socially or not. Um, professionally in this town, period. And we all came to the consensus based on a lot of historical information and data that we were presented, and I think some of that, if we can make it available, when we talk about this again. In terms of looking at the irrigation bills, um, I think we saw one for about two dollars. Um, and then there were some other, you know, bills and items that we looked at over five, I don't remember how many, a span of years and years and years. Um, that helped to inform our decisions and recommendations that Raftellus then took and made the rate recommendations to the board. Um, that information, I think, would help to paint the picture of why these structures are the way they are right now. Um, and I think that would be helpful for other people to see. Um, I was kind of looking at other municipalities and our impact fees are actually nominal in comparison to other municipalities around us, I think Severance has for a three quarter tap. Um, sixteen thousand nine hundred and seventy five dollars for residential and wastewater's fourteen thousand. Um, Fort Collins is eleven and eleven thousand and ten thousand, so I'm not really concerned with a five percent increase. Um, I understand and hear you, trustee Daly, when you say that it looks that way on paper, but that's absolutely not what we would be intending to do with the town. Um, and I agree with you, trustee Cannon, that we should try and incentivize, um, economic development wherever we can, so I'd like to see, um, how we can do that in the future, possibly with the new rate study. Um. I'm talking faster than I can read my notes. Um, I would be interested in learning more, and maybe this is an offline conversation I have with somebody about not meeting the reserve. And of that and how, um, if we're going above and beyond what's required by the CRF loan requirements, how does that affect like our ten year repayment plan? Um, moving forward, and then, I'm encouraged about the rate study, I definitely think that we have to do that, I agree with that. Um, and I'm, you know, just wanna say again that depending on what happens with North Pooter and the contract negotiations, that could look a million different ways, but hopefully trending in the positive for us and our residents. Um, CML, uh, the district meeting did talk about solar grants, I love the idea of utilizing those and other avenues to save as much as possible. I'd like to explore those ideas, um, and, uh, an investment in how to save for the future. I think, uh, the gentleman that spoke during public comment and trustee Yates can tell me his name, um, who said his father signed the contract in the eighties and they said we would never go above five hundred acre feet.
Mm-hmm.
And that's important to note, and that we're at a point in time where our board really does have the opportunity to think forward and plan for the future. Um, and it's not comfortable, it's not thing that we all want to do, but a small increase right now could save us a great deal moving forward, and so, um, hopefully we're the responsible board that can do the uncomfortable things and set ourselves up for success moving forward. Um. Let's see.
I apologize, it's rich.
Thank you, I knew you could tell me. Um, I also support transferring the max, um, of course, from our general fund to the water fund. I am curious though, what cuts that would um, force us to do.
Trust me, Ian.
I'm gonna keep it short, but I agree and I appreciate the input that everybody has put in, I think have been very valuable. Uh, definitely agree on the rate study, we definitely gonna need to look at that, especially if we have some major changes in, uh, what's gonna happen with the water, water purchasing and such down the road. You know, I, the five percent, I think as far as the capital improvement, I mean, we always said we wanna grow the pay for itself, and that's where I think we came up to that five percent last year. So, I mean, I think that's important, you know, if we're gonna charge the residents five percent, everybody needs to be on a level playing field at that point, so. I, I agree a hundred percent with that, I agree with the, uh, the transfer of that in it too. And, you know, the nice thing about everything is the fees are not stuck in stone. If something happens, we can reevaluate. So, that's, again, that's something that we can look forward to down the road. So, you got my input.
Thank you, sir.
Well, uh, yeah, I mean, certainly this is a very difficult topic for everybody, I, I, but I think at the end of the day, this board no, uh, absolutely understands that we need to be financially responsible, right? So, I, unfortunately, we don't have all the details in front of us at this point as far as what a potential NPIC contract could look like or these types of things, but obviously the board needs to be prepared for rate study quarter one, and I guess Megan, my question to you would be, we, we're gonna have to thread the needle on this sucker, because it's, we're gonna. I want to see the rate study done, and if we can make changes to rates before the irrigation season starts, that's we, that is, I believe this board's number one priority, uh, maybe I'm speaking for everybody.
No, six months.
That we, we're gonna be threading the needle on this, because these things don't happen overnight, right, as everybody knows, so. Um, I guess I would say, that's, that's my direction as far as that goes, um, I absolutely support the five percent for CIP. Um. Again, I, I think it's really difficult in this to, you know, I, we, we need to balance a budget here, and unfortunately, the only thing I can see here is that we are in fact going to have to increase rates without seeing what a rate study is gonna come up with quarter one. Um, to trustee Cannon's and, and trustee Cannon, I absolutely appreciate everything you were saying about commercial uh, rates in part, as far as that goes, but the fact is incentives for these types of things, right now, we, we can't afford to do that. Right, I mean, these funds have to balance themselves, and if we cut costs on commercial rates, then that means residents are gonna pay more, and I, I am not gonna go for, there's no chance, so.
Nevermind, I am grateful you said that, because that would have been my exact response to that. So I don't know if that helps direct where those conversations go in the future right now, but I would not ever.
May- maybe after quarter one, if, if things look better. We could certainly consider it then, but I mean, as far as the, the numbers that we have right now, I think, I think that's off the table. So, I, I, un-un-unfortunately, I, I, I would support the five percent increase for re- residents at this point, because that's I, we're really under the gun here, and I, I. We can't, we cannot let these funds get out of control. So, I, that would be my recommendation, uh, I, I absolutely support the general tran- uh, fund transfer, that's we, that, that is the number one biggest thing we can do right now to support our residents, and I think that's the most appropriate way forward.
And the hug grant.
And, uh, as well as continue to fund the hug grant, absolutely.
Can we put that in perspective too, five percent, if you got a three hundred dollar bill, would be fifteen dollars, is that right?
Well, they did that on the.
Right, so I mean, again, for people to know, I think it's not, it's, hopefully it's not gonna be dramatic, even though I know some people are day to day, right, but it's not a huge impact, I would think.
About thirteen dollars.
Yep, right.
I'd like to consider a grant potential option for businesses.
Especially with the construction and the impact that that's gonna have on the businesses.
Yeah, so that's in the weeds for sure right now, um, I think rate study bring in for sure.
Right, but we're talking about ways that we can help them that don't rely on dollars associated with the budget. Right, so if there is a way that we can offer grant monies to help businesses who are struggling and who are paying huge, huge amounts just like residents are, just like residents are, then I think that we should have a grant available to help them in hardship. And we, we are planning for the chip for a lot of businesses next year. Like we're intentionally planning that, not to hurt them, but that's gonna be the outcome of plans that the town has. So, I know we're not talking about other types of budget items, but in, within our other budgetary discussions, I think we should consider some utility grant for, for non-residential users.
I wouldn't mind seeing that come back as another work session and how we can support the businesses during construction.
Yeah, among many reasons, not just utility.
Yeah, yeah, to give you just a quick update, I am wor- working with the town of Estes Park and the town of Windsor, um, Laramore County Economic Development um, on options and ideas and how they have done messaging and how they've supported their businesses, so, um, hopefully we'll have something ready here Q one of twenty twenty five.
Patty, we do have it set up right now that businesses can use, utilize hug grant funds as well, correct? It doesn't allocate for.
Yeah, I thought it was residential as well, but. But that's something we can certainly talk about during the budget process, I mean.
Yeah, and that's not just for downtown businesses, you, anybody. U- utility bills, obviously, everybody is feeling it, so.
Yeah, it, it does specify residential water utility customer.
Does it, with that, could we see what the average bill would look like? Because that will pretty much dictate how many thousands of dollars get set aside for supporting commercial.
This would be super complicated, cause there's no like measurable essential use for a business, so. It's definitely something that needs to come back, and that's why it was omitted from that initially, just for the background information, because you can't compare one business versus another.
Right.
And understand their water use in essence leads, so that's why it was excluded.
Brewery's gonna be vastly different than this, yeah, right.
Trust you can.
Yeah, a couple things, first of all, I appreciate everyone's comments on that, on, on this, this is a good discussion. Um, there are other means to incentivize and bring in new business.
Yes, outside of utilities.
Without, dealing with utilities, so that's, you can offset other things, you, there's the creation of URAs, DDAs and so forth like that, which, which create a fund that can tremendously, even more than a utility rate. Help out a business, um, I brought this up right after I took office this year. Uh, you know, we were, we passed this emergency water rationing, uh, for the town, and we've been doing that every year for the past, what, four or five years or so like that. Um, and I mentioned at that time that, that this is a new norm that we're in, you know. We're in a period of what they call airification, all of Colorado, which means the amount of water, the demand of the water is reducing the amount of av- of available water. Um, you know, when I sat in Patty's chair several years ago, we were, and we did this, this, um, uh, you know, water efficiency plan, uh, we did some research as well at the time. Um, Greeley, for example, they don't issue a water emergency every year and do water ration, it is the normal. And they wrote it into their, into their channel code, that begin on this month, this is how much water you will use, this is when you will do, and they spell it out, so that it, it it's like any kind of conservation measure, you know, that's, that's driven by the government, you know, we're we'd have to drive that, that was conservation measures for the benefit of the entire community. For example, the health of our water fund and our wastewater fund. Uh, it would be, I think it'd be simple for staff to do a little investigation about, what does that, what does an ordinance like that look like? And how can we take the information that we've heard again through the Raftellus study, the water efficiency plan, and write our code so that, so that we're not, and I, I know people don't like that, but by the same token, we gotta look out for the health of the community too. I mean, that's another way of saving residents' money, if we just, it's a code change. You know, as opposed to a, an infusion of cash, you know, and the code change could help reduce those costs as well, so that's just something I wanna.
Thank you. Um. Yeah, a lot of good, a lot of good stuff, nice ideas. Input from each and every one of you, stuff we can look at after the water study and budget season and get more fine details on things of that nature. Um, my direction on this would be follow up with a five percent increase. Um, we knew when we were adopting the new water rate structure, this was gonna be a thing. Um, hopefully, you know, we can make changes if things pan out. Um, but we have a plan for the worst and be fiscally responsible in that sense. Uh, definitely in favor of a transfer from the general fund and uh, I didn't say that loud, or I did say the water study, but, uh, definitely a, a new rate study. Um. And yeah, any ideas you guys come up with or rabbit holes you want to go down for ways to, um. Help us, help the town, I mean, don't, don't hold them back, right? Keep, keep, you never know what's going to stick, what might work, so, um, thank you for the discussion tonight and, uh, yes.
Trusty Teats, did you have anything else that you wanted to see related to the having what you need to make a?
No, no, that's totally, I'm good for right now.
All right, so anybody else have anything else they want to say before we wrap up the work session?
Go Eagles.
You're, go Eagles, cool, I'm down with that.
Um, Megan, Bob and I met with Mr. Seaworth, um, this week to talk through his concerns and his issues and he, he had read. Completely read the email that we sent out and just picked out pieces of it, so he's, he's good with where we're at and the conversations we had and. Um, had, I believe we had a really good conversation, he had some ideas that, you know, we'll talk about, but. Um, just wanted to let you know that we did follow up with him and, and met with him in person, it was a really great conversation, thank you.
Ever get any answers back on that five hundred acre fee he was talking about? For the allocations, remember we had talked about it. Um, that there was extra ir- for the irrigation, we get a specific allocation in the contract. For filling the ponds and stuff like that over.
If it's in the contract, I would go about it.
Well, we fill the ponds with five shares and no food.
Right, so, but do you remember when I had brought it up?
So, yes. Yes, so those. That water is not the water we can, we can, it's part of our contract, so we can't use that water, is that?
So, I'm not sure what you're suggesting is.
Right, the fishing ponds are filled with shares of North Pooter, but it's not, but we can't utilize those shares with the water we have. Due to the nineteen eighty three contract.
Undercurrent situation, correct?
Yeah.
Got it, so it's not usable, it was there, but it's not usable.
Not treatable, yeah.
Yeah, at this point in time, at this point in time.
Yeah, no, I wasn't looking at treatable, I was looking at just being able to utilize it elsewhere on the east side of the interstate, there is apparently a. Large amount of acre feet of water available as part of that contract for non-pot. That we could have utilized to water.
Oh.
Areas, that was what I was asking. Did we find any additional information about that one?
I believe that this goes back to the old, uh, irrigation system over.
Yeah, it doesn't, I don't, that doesn't have anything to do with the North Pooter contract. Yeah. Yeah, does it have five hundred acre feet to allow?
And understand that the H O As can be in.
There, yeah, I've heard they're getting. Yep, I love it. Alright.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.